Test, 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 test. Good evening all. Follow the meeting order now for regular city council, uh, meeting of, uh, July sixteenth, twenty twenty-four, City of American Canyon. Please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Roll call please.
Councilmember Miriam Abadamas is excused. Councilmember Mark Joseph.
Here.
Councilmember Pierre Washington.
Here.
Vice Mayor David Oro.
Here.
Mayor Leon Garcia.
Here.
Thank you, council. Now we'll have a report on closed session, confirmation of reportable action. Mr. Ross.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, members of the public, uh, the council convened in open session at four thirty-three P M after, uh, ascertaining that there were no comments on the matters agendized for closed session, uh, consideration. After considering item number one, uh, that portion of the closed session concluded at five twenty-one P M, council convened again in closed session to, uh, address the matters that are agendized of potential matters for litigation and, uh, existing litigation. That concluded at six twenty-three P M. I will do a written report upon return from closed session, but I'd like to note orally something that will be attached to that written report. It's with respect to agenda item three C. It's the challenge by the City of Vallejo against the, what's known as the Gia Venoni or Buzz Oats, uh, project. The Superior Court of Sacramento on July twelfth, twenty twenty-four, uh, denied the petition or the request for relief of Vallejo and stated the grounds for it in, uh, about an eleven-page opinion, um, summarizing, uh, the court couldn't find evidence or legal authority, uh, for Vallejo's, uh, position. Uh, there will be a subsequent judgment in the matter and I will inform the council when that judgment comes forward, is executed and entered. That would conclude the report upon return from closed session, uh, unless there are questions.
Questions from council?
No, sir.
Uh, Mr. Ross, for the benefit of those of us present who may not be tuned into legal vernacular, translation please.
Uh, the city and Gia Venoni won, Vallejo lost.
Thank you. And thank you for the good work done on that. Okay, moving on in our agenda, proclamations and presentations. Well, it is great pleasure to all of us this evening to have July twenty twenty-four as Park and Recreation Month and glad to have all staff in person here today. Thank you for the work you do every day. Well, yeah, yeah, come on. Take a bow, folks, take a bow. Huddle around the podium. There you go, thank you. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor and council. Our Parks and Recreation team is truly incredible.
Who's our furry friend there?
This is Soro. He is our mascot, um, and Soro means fox in Tagalog. So, our team consists of ninety Parks and Recreation professionals spanned out through various capacities within our department from aquatics, senior services, recreation classes, sports and fitness, open space, volunteer opportunities, facility rentals and special events. Their hard work, dedication and commitment enhance our community's quality of life. We teach life-saving skills and we promote health and wellness. We offer essential services and we are advocates for environmental sustainability and protectors of sensitive habitats and parklands. We are here tonight to highlight what they do and to show all the positive impacts that they make every single day in our community. I would also like to acknowledge the staff that are not here this evening because they're currently working, providing those programs to our community. So, thank you to our amazing team, you all do a wonderful job.
I'm sorry, say again. Do we have the proclamation?
You will now.
Very good, thank you. They usually have a card copy here in front of me. Well, it must be great pleasure to read the proclamation. City of American Canyon, July twenty twenty-four is Park and Recreation Month. Whereas Park and Recreation programs are an integral part of the communities throughout the coun- country and vital but important to establishing and maintaining the quality of life, our communities ensure the health of all citizens and contributing to the economic and environmental well-being of a community and region. And whereas the City of American Canyon Parks and Recreation Department enriches the lives of our community members through active participation in lifelong learning, health and wellness, community involvement, providing essential services, protection of natural resources and habitats and recreational activities. And whereas Park and Recreation provides essential, uh, and life-saving skills through learn-to-swim programs, specializing life-saving certification, expert hands-on training for our Park and Recreation staff. And whereas Park and Recreation fosters social cohesiveness in communities by celebrating diversity, providing space for, to come together peacefully, modeling, uh, compassion, promoting social equity, connecting with social networks and ensuring all people have access to the benefits. And whereas Park and Recreation strengths in a community's identity by providing facilities and services that reflect and celebrate our community's character, heritage, culture, history, aesthetics and landscape. And whereas Parks and Recreation sustain, uh, sustains and stewards our natural resources by protecting habitats and open space, connecting people to nature, promoting the ecological function of, uh, parkland. And whereas, in collaboration with the California Parks and Recreation Society, a statewide public awareness campaign and National Recreation and Parks Association and nationwide public awareness campaign aims to inform citizens and recognize the importance of access to local parks and trails, open space, facilities, services and programs for the health, wellness and development, inspiration and safety for all. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Leon Garcia, Mayor, City of American Canyon, on behalf of the city council, do proclaim July twenty twenty-four as Park and Recreation Month urging all residents to use and enjoy American Canyon's parks, trails, open space, facilities and many recreational opportunities throughout our program and services. Thank you so much for your work. Much appreciated. We gotta do a photo op.
You're gonna have to. We're serious about this.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, Parks and Recreation Month, that's, uh, kind of like song, uh, just running through my head right now, that one has a theme, summertime and living is easy. Yep. Fisher Jopman and the cotton is high. All right, we'll move on now with our agenda. Public comments, items not on closed session or open session agenda. Do we have any cards received or comments?
I have no, um, written comments and no, uh, cards submitted.
Okay, it looks like we have one, uh, member from the audience.
Good evening, uh, Mayor and council. I'd like to, uh, well, my name is Kenneth Leary, I'm a resident of American Canyon. I'd like to advocate for a minimum of fifty-foot setback, uh, starting at, uh, Paoli Loop on the west side of American, uh, on the highway to the city limits, uh, to create a Parkway-type atmosphere. Uh, and this would include, uh, a pathway for bikes and pedestrians and hoping and advocating that the, uh, county will continue that on. On the, I mean, on the west side, I would like to see a more density of trees that would, uh, block, cover up some of the businesses there and, and create a greater density so it does look park-like. So I meant on the east side of Paoli Loop, uh, is where I want the fif- uh, fifty-foot setback, a minimum. Uh, so I'd like to advocate for that and, uh, have that be a part of the discussion, uh, here in American Canyon. I think that would do greatly to improve the, uh, feel of, of American Canyon and also add to the concept or notion that it's the gateway to the, uh, Napa Valley. All right, uh, thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Thanks for your comments, sir.
All right.
I think it's, uh, I'm thinking, uh, attached to, uh, comments and the, uh, proclamation this evening, Vine Trail is having their, uh, grand opening between St. Helena and Calistoga coming up and that's gonna be quite an occasion to celebrate as well. Okay, anybody for, anybody else? Please.
Fran Lewis. Uh, I would just like to find out, my party is on the twenty-seventh at the Boys and Girls Club and I'm just wondering about parking. I expect, uh, two hundred people.
Oh my.
And I'm wondering where they're gonna park if the closed, the street is closed. It's not a Saturday.
Uh, any place but on that street, I would think, yeah.
Well, anybody at the city should kind of let me know what's going on.
Maybe they can help you out with that.
First question.
No.
Uh, my second question is, for the last five weeks, uh, the trucks have been going up and down my road every minute of two or three, which is fine. However, the last two days, they're, when they go by, they leave a cloud, they leave a cloud of dust. And I don't know who's in charge of that, but, uh, I, I feel it in my throat and I think that they should either water it down or, and I don't know who to contact, so, uh, that's.
Well, I think Mr. Hawley could look into that.
Yep.
All right, thank you. Any other public comment?
I do have some, uh, hands raised online, Mayor.
Okay.
Go ahead, Justin.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. I am Justin Hall and I am live here very long time and I am working with Oak Creek. So, um, I'm gonna, like, I know, we're almost done, we're, we're halfway done at the police office and someday you guys can take a look, the hallway, we just put that together and we will be back here, we're hoping to go back there and do some office work, uh, to tear up the carpet. So, if you see me, our creator, Arthur, say hi to me and, um, I think I see you guys at the, uh, next door apartment, I would have looked outside. So, um, editing is that, uh, I want to see, um, I know I pray, this is very patient and I not see nobody, um, working on a hill, get ready to build a house, but there's nothing out there, nothing out there, uh, but, Don Moore, Karen Don Moore, um, I've been there, I live here too, there's no sound up there, so, um, thank you so much.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Justin. I have no other hands raised.
All right. Very good, then we'll close public comment on, uh, this matter and move on to agenda changes.
Mayor, if, uh, may please request that we extend, uh, or sorry, continue agenda item twelve to a date not yet certain, we'll re-notice as appropriate once we're ready to do that.
Need a motion on that, Mr. Hawley?
Nope.
Okay.
Actually, we wouldn't need a motion, never mind, sorry, I'm out of sorts. Yes, we would need a motion, Mayor, please, uh, to continue that item.
Do we need it now, because I'll make that motion.
That'd be appropriate.
I'll second.
Motion second to, uh, uh, in the wording, Mr. Hawley?
A date uncertain.
A date uncertain.
Yeah.
Okay, needs to be extended, date uncertain. Okay, roll call please.
Councilmember Joseph?
Yes.
Councilmember Washington?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Oro?
Yes.
Mayor Garcia.
Yes, thank you, council.
Thank you, Mayor.
Uh, with respect to the consent calendar, if there is, uh, no item to be discussed, I will accept the motion to.
So moved. Second.
Motion and second, roll call please.
Councilmember Joseph?
Yes.
Councilmember Washington?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Oro?
Yes.
Mayor Garcia.
Yes, thank you all. Moving on with our public hearing, uh, item twelve's been extended, item thirteen, ordinance amending municipal code titles thirteen and fourteen.
Thank you, Mayor. This item relates to, uh, some changes to the municipal code, specifically titles thirteen and fourteen, uh, water capacity fees, wastewater capacity fees. These are fees charged on new development proportion to their impact on our existing systems and our current, um, requirements are that they pay those, developers pay those fees at the time of building permit, uh, and there's really no flexibility in the municipal code. Um, other impact fees such as traffic fee and park fee have flexibility where the council, if it wanted to, could consider a, a delay on when those fees would be paid, uh, based on specific circumstances of a particular project. So, um, it's staff's recommendation that we provide that flexibility for the council, uh, for the water and wastewater capacity fees as well, and that's what this ordinance proposes to do. The additional language shown in bold, uh, underline is the exact same language found in other parts of the code for those other fees. So it's really just a copy and paste, um, with that kind of language and, uh, should the council, um, want to, uh, should, assuming the council approves the ordinance tonight, uh, we would do a second reading, uh, and then it would become effective, but any individual project or any individual request would come back to the council separately, uh, and the council's under no obligation to say yes or no to any of those requests, but right now you don't even have the flexibility with these two fees. So, we'd like to have, you have some additional flexibility and happy to answer any other questions.
Okay. Questions from council before we open the public hearing? Councilmember Joseph?
Yes, I, I think this seems like a reasonable proposal. Um, we do, we have been able to do this with all the other impact fees and sometimes it's, it, there's a certain amount of logic. If you haven't developed something, it's kind of hard to say it's got an impact. So the idea of, of deferring the payments until later, um, and if we're getting, uh, essentially interest on that deferred payment, that's even better. So, I don't think there's a problem, I, I'm certainly sympathetic to this proposal.
Okay. Other council comment, questions?
No, sir.
Okay, council ready for, uh, public comment?
Yes, sir.
Public comment on this matter is open.
Mayor Garcia, I have no written comments and no, uh, submitted, uh, requests to comment on this item.
Okay, very good. I'll close public comment then, return to council for further discussion, desire.
There's no further action or, or for further discussion, I'll make a motion to adopt ordinance number twenty twenty-four, an ordinance of the city council, let me start over, an ordinance of the City of American Canyon City Council amending titles thirteen and fourteen of the City of American Canyon Municipal Code to authorize the city council to amend the timing for payment of development for mitigation impact fees for sewer and water fees.
I'll second it.
Motion and second, roll call please.
Councilmember Joseph?
Yes.
Councilmember Washington?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Oro?
Yes.
Mayor Garcia.
Yes. Thank you, council, we'll now move on to business item, number fourteen. FY twenty-four twenty-five capital project schedule updates.
Thank you, Mayor, as Erica walks up to the, the podium, I'll lay the groundwork for this. The council approved our capital improvement program as a part of the budget process back in June and what tonight is, is the first in a series of, uh, what is intended to be quarterly updates to the council regarding specific details on various projects and schedules. Uh, this one will be a business item tonight as Erica kind of lays the groundwork, um, for how you're gonna see some of these items in the future. Subsequent quarterly updates will be under the management reports and, and be a singular kind of handout, but we wanted to kind of lay the groundwork with this first presentation tonight and, um, I'll just note at your dais, we have some new and improved pictures, uh, you should, you should see this here at your dais and then there's also a handout, uh, that is a, a little bit cleaner, just a little bit cleaner picture than what's in the, in the staff report as far as all the schedules and everything, so, take it away, Erica.
Good evening, American Canyon Mayor Garcia and council members and American Canyon community. Erica Ammon Smithy is Public Works Director. Thank you for the introduction, uh, Jason. As you see in front of you, we, we, it's, and not everyone has this, but they did have it as part of the, um, agenda packet tonight. Um, we have the overall map of all projects that we're working on this fiscal year that was adopted in June. And, um, and in front of you was a capital project snapshot, um, you probably saw that big, uh, depending on how big your computer screen is or how you watched on iPad or on your, on your cellphone, the, the schedule is big, um, as it goes over a full fiscal year or completion of projects. So, um, what we try to present tonight is just a project snapshot for the next ninety days. Um, already some of the dates on the, um, very, um, overscheduled or, or, or major project year ahead in capital projects go, um, that we had to push some dates out. We are relying on many of these projects with consultants and being able to turn around, review times in a timely manner, or they're grant-related and we're waiting for approvals from various organizations or projects in front of us, um, such as Green Island Road, for example, we're, we're waiting on, on PG&E, they've done their part works, but now we're waiting for, um, AT&amp;T to get out in front of us and, and get their work done so then we can start the real fund, which is the roadway construction and widening later this fall and the Vine Trail, um, connection on Green Island Road. We all should know now, if you haven't been driving around, that Benton Way is under rehabilitation, um, and thank you, um, Fran, for, for bringing up the parking. I believe we should be done with FDR in two weeks, I could be wrong, but there is access available, which I think we've been sharing to you offline, um, that there should be adequate parking by the time you're there, but, um, if you, I think the detours for Benton Way, uh, for example, have been going really well. Um, we've been in direct coordination with Parks and Recreation and as well as the Boys and Girls Club for access during this timeframe and the, um, and for the cul-de-sac, um, that's halfway between Chaucer and Hummingbird Way, um, providing, um, access during the construction because there's no other outlet for those, um, residents to go to without allowing some leeway through the roadway construction. The beauty of, um, recycling in place or FDR, full depth recognition, is that you're recycling materials in the roadbed already and allowing access. You could open it up to everyone, but then that could be disastrous too for those who don't adhere to speeds because it's gravelly right now, it might be compacted for the most part, but, um, you know, it really adheres having people on scene, allowing people in and out of there, um, at a very slow traffic speed. So, um, awarded construction contracts, um, we have, we think, I think there's nine projects here we'd like to be awarding in the next nine month, uh, three months. Um, one's probably the, the City Hall real repair is a minor project, we're gonna be doing an informal bid process on this one and it hopefully, please will be awarded in, in August, they'll be under the signing authority of our city manager, Jason Hawley, um, so that we can get that started in September before the new rain events, um, this winter. And then, um, the other exciting ones are park-related, new open space, trailhead and parking lot improvements, um, getting that here in September. Um, we have various ARPA projects, um, the Recovery Act, Knights Bridge Water and Pavement Improvements, Melvin Road Sidewalk and Storm Drain. Again, we're waiting on, um, complete a hundred percent design drawings, I saw the, um, Knights Bridge was in, Melvin's also in, so it's a matter of making sure the plans are biddable and ready to advertise, um, at later at this month so they can get out to bid and bring it back to council in September, um, to keep to these timelines. Other projects that are under design right now by consultants are Silver Oak restroom, the North Hampton restroom and shade structure and wetlands edge enhancement. Um, wetlands enhancement is grant-related item that needs to be constructed, um, before December or by December, the end of the year. So, um, we've saw the landscape plans, we kicked back more comments this past week, so, um, we're hoping to get those plans here in August so we can get that out to bid and fall is the optimum time to, um, with, with plantings, a lot of that project is outdoor plantings. Um, we have a outdoor educational center, like a shade structure or such, and then bathrooms. The bathrooms aren't grant-eligible, so it's really a matter of getting the landscaping in, the, um, additional trail treatments and, um, the outdoor education shelter. And then we have the Melvin Tennis Court Repair, this will be internal design and then of course the Green Island Road widening reconstruction, we, we plan to bring this back to award in October, pending how the utility work goes, um, and the comfortability of, of getting that awarded prior to them being completed or at least underway. Uh, we received our, um, we're tentatively receiving our NEPA clearance from Caltrans in the next couple of weeks, um, we're completing with our, our architectural, this is for the, even though it's been through completion for all the other federal funding, Caltrans still has to do their process for our Vine Trail portion, so that's finally moved forward and we're just waiting for the final signatures so we can get our request for authorization to start construction. And then as far as design contracts, we have two projects out to RFP, it's the American Canyon East Guard Rail Improvements, that's a Highway Safety Improvement Program grant, and that's reviewing the K-rail beyond foreends before the city limits. And then, um, South Kelly Road, Highway twenty-nine intersection improvements and the reconstruction of South Kelly Road, which we're partnering with the county on. So we're, we're tentatively bringing those back in August and September for design contract award and then going out to the RFP for the, um, skater improvements at both the water treatment plant and the wastewater plant, um, working on our new procurement system. You may not be aware, but, um, we've daylighted some projects in our Open Gov system. Um, our community development director, Brent Cooper, was the first person to go through the RFP process and, um, Public Works is now working on our procurements and, um, we have projects out there, so, um, it's been a great process so far for reviewing. So, um, with that, I'm open to any questions you may have.
Questions from council? Vice Mayor Oro?
Yeah, uh, just wanna make sure, this is all within the next ninety days on this map?
The map is the whole year, I'm just gonna show you, this is the whole year of projects ahead.
You mentioned something about ninety days.
That's the Word document, just identifying the projects. Now, we could refine the project map in the future and, and just show the projects that are gonna go out, be in construction at the same time, if that was helpful to council. This is what we're asking for feedback on what you'd like to see as a quarterly update. And then, the PowerPoint that we've done in the past, bringing that back. And then the PowerPoint that we've done in the past, bringing that back to you at the same time. So we should be having photos and identifying where these are further.
Very good.
If, if, you know, that that's what you'd like to see.
Yeah, no, this is super helpful. I like it. It's better than what's in the packet. There was a bunch of numbers on there and I didn't know what I was looking at. So yeah, using common names is good. I'm just trying to figure out what else I can add to your list. Thank you very much for this report.
We're trying to add a capital program project coordinator this fall. You also approved that in the budget. So we'll be recruiting for that person to help us.
This paper's not big enough to put that list on.
Thank you. This is great work. I think this, the City of American Canyon and the people that live here have been wanting this for a while. You know, I've talked for years about getting the big things done, which we did with the Broadway District Specific Plan, the Green Island Road District, as well as Watson Ranch. This is exactly, you know, implementation of some of that, right? But also a lot of what I, you know, we turned a couple of years back. I was like, this council sat together here in twenty nineteen, was like, oh, we did all the, we got all the big stuff rolling and now we're doing smaller stuff here. And this is important. I hate to call it infill, but it's important, smaller projects that move the community forward in a lot of ways. Bigger, actually, the way it moves it forward is bigger than the actual project itself. So thank you.
And I could also update you on the courtyard relocation. We're still on track for getting a modular structure out there this fall. The date, they're going to try to push us the end of August, but that's already awarded by you for us to move forward with smaller contracts. But just, I probably should add that update, you know, the next snapshot, if we're not already done and moved out of the old courtyard. But just since I'm up here, might as well update you on that. One project that I missed on here is the EV charging stations. If you haven't noticed, there's two new solar charging stations already delivered and deployed around the city. One's at the Aquatics Center Parking Lot and one's at Napa Junction. And they're operational, they're charge point chargers. And we have MCE providing us a scope of work through their free technical assistance program for EV chargers here at City Hall. Those will be the traditional hardwire.
Yeah, I was surprised to see those. I think we can communicate with extraterrestrials with those things as well, correct?
They move with the sun, yes.
Oh, yeah, yeah. They're, they're talking to somebody. The Corporation Yard movement, move date, when are you expecting that to happen?
We've been providing that, they have, we're, are on track to get out of there by the end of this year. But we're trying to fast track that to September, at least getting office people moved over to the new site.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Councilmember Joseph?
Well, I agree. This is a good thing to look at.
Oh, I had been turned on and turned myself off. This is a good thing to look at. It's a good comprehensive list. One quick comment on the South Kelly project. Does that include extending the left turn pocket when you're northbound twenty-nine and all that?
Yes, sir. The, as you adopted, I believe it was two years ago fall, the interim reduced, the EIR amendment for the reduced, the interim project, which is the left turn, lengthening the left turn lane, going northbound and adding a right turn lane southbound and then the extra lanes on South Kelly. The county also had added, they wanted the city to assist them in delivering tower roadway construction. So that whole area will be part of that, depending on their availability to pay for all of it. But so far, they're in for the design.
Okay, good. Well, that's exciting. Only other thing here, and it, you know, if there's a way to either expand the legend box, so there's kind of a red, yellow, green dot by each of them so that you can look and say, okay, this project's going great, this project has issues or, you know, red, this project has got problems or something. So that you can look at it and say, okay, all these are on target or, or something in between.
Well, that's where we could bring that hybrid or provide the PowerPoint slide deck that shows that timeframe and where the funding is. If you'd like to add that as a component, that could be.
Well, yeah, I think on the PowerPoint, that might be more an appropriate place to say, you know, this is a green project, a yellow project, red project. So this, this is a pretty, pretty robust chart. So it probably doesn't need anything else added to it. It's looking very good. I'm excited. I know you guys are going to be busy as I'll get out and that's exciting too. Especially since I'm over here and I'm not doing all that hard work. So thank you. Thank you for this, the new format. You know, thinking, certainly it helps a lot with the community, with our communication officer here to be able to put that on our city webpage. I like that new webpage design. It's very effective. Thank you. But I think they have something there that keeps people informed as to progress being made and what projects we're working on. They click on it and it's something more of a simplified design type of thing. It says, okay, here's where, here we are, or we've got the problem issues, but data completion type of thing. So, because we get a lot of questions about that, you know, what's going on, what's this, that and the other thing in the city. And a way of being able to communicate it in one point where we can all get that information would be very helpful. But I appreciate the work you've done on this. It's very good. Thank you.
Team effort.
Thanks, Erica.
Okay. Yes, well, we're open to public comment now.
Is that available to the public?
The, the map is, it was, it was included with the agenda packet and we'll update it with the revised copy that we provided tonight.
Okay, and also is Teresa Avenue on that list?
Teresa improvements are being done as part of the offsite improvements of the Oath Hill Development Project.
Oh, it will be with that. And how about Hess Road, that ridge is getting terrible.
That was brought to my attention today and how we can get that fixed as well. But that's not on our list, but it might be part of their restoration.
Anybody else for a public comment?
I have hand raised online.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Justin.
Well, good evening. I am Justin. I think I'm going to shout out, I do want to shout out with Erica. I think she's doing great, working our team. And if you need us, please call Oak Creek and we can just redo the carpet. And I want to see, last thing I went to on Zoom, I, I just want to see if we can do this. It's like update, subscribe, like what's happening next. Next time will be, there's going to be work on your home or, or street. And I think the way we can see, we can do that is, so I can do, look it up on my email that I can just click on subscribe to see if we can do that in the future. That's my question.
Are you referring to the construction updates page, Justin?
Yes. It, it's like redo, oh, this one is becoming to new you, like the, I'm going to say Highway twenty-nine, Broadway will be, be on there. Or warehouse, or new PG building coming in. I, I think I was thinking the way we can see, we can do that.
We can definitely look into it. I'm looking at our communications manager. I think there's something we can do. Thank you, Justin. Is there anything else?
Thank you, Erica.
Okay.
Any other speakers?
I have no other hands raised online.
Okay. Any else in the audience wants you to comment or question? Saying none? Thank you. We'll close this item and return to, this is an informational item only, so thank you for your presentation. Thank you. Moving on to item number fifteen, Park and Community Services Master Plan.
Good evening, mayor and council. The two thousand and twelve Parks and Community Services Master Plan was adopted by the council on June fifth, two thousand and twelve through resolution two thousand and twelve dash thirty-nine. It was the city's first attempt at a comprehensive plan to guide the Parks and Recreation Department and American Canyon's parks, civic facilities, open spaces, recreation programming and essential community services. We should be proud of the progress we've made so far. The two thousand and twelve plan was a visionary document that set the course of American Canyon's parks and recreation, reflecting who we are today and the people that we serve. To ensure we continue to meet the needs of our community, we believe it is time to update the Parks and Community Services Master Plan, especially as the city is already making progress in updating the general plan. In two thousand and twelve, the two thousand and twelve plan consists of six chapters. Parks and Recreation Facilities, Parks and Facility Maintenance, Recreation Programming, Family Services, Open Space and Trails and Bicycle and Pedestrian Circulation System. Additionally, it included two additional sections. One about vision and concepts and the other about recommendation, recommended goals and policies. Although the vision and concepts don't specifically speak to the overall vision of the department and how that aligns back with the city's mission, vision and values, it does identify a broad overview of our community's needs within the six chapters. Within the recommended goals and policies section, there are, there are eighty different goals and priorities focused on access, youth needs, interagency cooperation, facilities and staff, future opportunities, revenue and financing mechanisms, parks and recreation facilities, family services, open space and trails and bicycle and pedestrian circulation system. To date, we have currently done about ninety percent of these goals and priorities. For example, under social and physical access, we have, we comply with all state and federal accessibility codes and standards and provide recreation programs, facilities and services that meet the accessibility needs of our diverse and multi-generational community. And most recently, with the council's direction, we have looked at each Parks and Recreation Capital Improvement Program project with an eye of accessibility. And last August, we redesigned North Hampton Park as it being the first universal all-access play experience in Napa County. And then continuing that same theme over to Linwood and Viableagio Parks. In addition, we have partnered with over twenty-one different nonprofit organizations and community partners to offer diverse cultural programs and events that mirror communities' makeup, from our Holy Festival, Juneteenth Celebration, Pride Event, Polynesian Dance, language classes, as well as printing various city communications in Spanish and Tagalog. The city worked closely with American Canyon Community and Parks Foundation, Napa RCD, Napa County Regional Open Space District and the Land Trust of Napa County and many other open space nonprofit organizations and community partners that support our parks, open space, recreation and trails. We also utilize volunteers to assist with our community events, special cleanup days and small projects throughout the city. We're also working as a city to relocate and reuse the Corporation Yard. This was identified within the two thousand and twelve plan. And most recently, this has come to life with the plans of the Ecology Center moving to that location and the Corporation Yard being relocated to the former Napa Junction Community Center, Elementary School, excuse me. And then lastly, as an example, we partner with our youth sports organizations to utilize our facility, where they utilize our facilities for their programs and games. What we are not pursuing is building a multi-use community center that can accommodate a thousand-person seating, building a gymnasium and a teen center at the Silver Oak Park and a sports complex with lighted fields. That's important to note because it is outlined within the plan. Also, under chapter one, Parks and Recreation Facilities, the two thousand and twelve plan sets a minimum standard of five acres of parkland per thousand people as outlined in the city's general plan and Quimby Act. The standard encompasses neighborhood parks, community and regional park facilities. In two thousand and twelve, the city had twenty-two recreational parks, ranging in size from point two-five of an acre to up to ten acres, totally seventy-nine acres for the entire city. Based on the two thousand and twelve census population of over nineteen thousand people, the city, the city should have had about ninety-seven acres of parkland, where we are falling short about eighteen acres from that standard. As of two thousand and twelve, our population is approximately twenty-two thousand people, which would equate to about a hundred and ten acres of parkland. To date, we have not increased our number of recreational parks. However, the two thousand and plan, the two thousand and twelve plan does not account for the new open space property, which was acquired by the city in nineteen ninety-nine, which included six hundred and forty acres of open space and roughly six miles of trails dedicated to outdoor recreational use. Additionally, the Wetlands Preserve, also known as Clark Ranch, where in two thousand and nine, the city council adopted the general plan amendment designating Clark Ranch as open space, adding twenty-six acres with about five point five miles of trail that was left out of the master plan. We are actively pursuing additional parkland opportunities, including Watson Ranch, Jaeger Open Space, Napa Cove and the vacant lot at Kimberly Park and the recently acquired former Napa Junction Elementary School. As part of the Parks and Community Services Commission's work plan for fiscal year twenty-three twenty-four, the council approved the commission to prepare a request for a proposal to update the two thousand and twelve plan. The commission re-engaged with RRM Design Group, the most qualified respondent, to the original solicitation to develop a scope of work for updating the plan. On June eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, at a special joint city council meeting with PCS, the council approved PCS' work plan, which included updating the two thousand and twelve plan. The update will include a virtual kickoff meeting with city staff to discuss project expectations, mission, goals, community outreach strategies, scope of service, schedule and expected deliveries. We'll also review existing city materials, which will include the current Parks and Community Services Master Plan, the Community Needs Assessment from two thousand and fifteen, the American Canyon Bicycle Plan and the general plan's Parks, Recreation and Environmental Element. We will have a series of public engagement opportunities, which will include an online questionnaire to distribute to the community, provide materials for pop-up events that will be staffed by city staff, have a study session with city staff, community members, commission, council members and stakeholders to review the city's mission, vision and values and gather input on guiding principles, goals and objectives. There will be stakeholder meetings, roughly about four to six virtual meetings with identified community partners and nonprofit organizations that provide services and support. These will be conducted by RRM and will be held virtually. And then lastly, we'll hold a public open house where attendees will engage in interactive activities to help determine the community's desire and priorities. This will include discussions on programming, exploring parks and amenities that the community would like to have in the future and a sticker exercise to help determine those priorities. In addition, the plan will also include a look at programs and services and future needs, design and development of new parks and facilities, look at what we currently have, what the community desires, standards of park facilities and criteria for these new, for these new park locations, funding and resource allocations, and lastly, an implementation plan. RRM will attend two Parks and Community Services Commission meetings. The first meeting will take place during the midpoint of the project and the second meeting will be towards the end of the project to collect comments. In addition, RRM will also meet with the Open Space Active Transportation and Sustainability Commission at least once. And again, this will most likely be towards the end of the, the plan to collect their comments. Once the administrative plan has all the city comments and the commissioners' comments, it will be brought to this body, the city council, for review and comment. And then lastly, they will take all those comments and develop and put it in together and then it will be brought back to council for adoption and approval. So tonight, staff is recommending that council adopt a resolution amending the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-four twenty-five budget and approving an agreement with RRM Design Group from San Leandro in the amount not to exceed two hundred and seven thousand dollars to update the Parks and Community Services Master Plan. Thank you. This concludes my staff report and I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Very good. Thank you. Mr. Hawley, did you have a comment?
Yeah, just a couple of things to add on there. The full scope of work for the consultant is shown in the agenda packet, starting roughly on page two twenty-two. And so, you know, tonight is about showing you, here's the, the scope of work the consultant's going to be working on. We recommend going with them. But I wanted to highlight one of the points that, that Ally made. You know, the two thousand and twelve master plan had quite a significant number of items in it, policies, projects, et cetera, roughly eighty of them. And we've done quite a few of them or more of them are underway. But there are a couple notable things that we're not really pursuing right now. I think this is an important inflection point, particularly as it relates to like community center, as it relates to the pool and some other, you know, big ticket items. In, in the past, our focus has shifted to focusing on what we have. We're parent replacement funds, working on renovating the things that we have. And we aren't actively planning for. for any of these larger ticket items. And so, we wanted to highlight that because it shows up on the two thousand and twelve plan. At this point, we weren't planning on having those be in this new master plan, but if the council has some different perspectives, we want to make sure that we've teased that out and, and don't miss the mark. Part of what we want to do is to make sure this plan is realistic. And, you know, while it did have eighty things, and we got a lot of them done, this plan didn't have any real way of doing those big-ticket items that are listed in it. So twelve years later, those big-ticket items are nowhere to be started, and there was no real way of implementing this plan to even achieve those. So we want to make sure we've got the right expectation with the community and not have a plan that promises without a way of delivering. So we want to bring that forward in a transparent way, and obviously, we'll implement what the council's interested in, but we wanted to bring, we want to highlight our focus has been more recently on repair and renovations.
Thank you.
That's all I had. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. We're up next, Vice Mayor Oro.
Yeah, thank you, and thank you for the report, and thank you for the detail. As I was reading this, reading the packet on Sunday night, pretty late, I realized that I probably should read the two thousand and twelve plan because I, I didn't know what we had achieved. I think you outlined it very well in terms of what, how far we've come, what we've implemented. Obviously, there were still a lot of holes that we didn't achieve. But I don't want to discount some, I just got done talking about small things that we're doing, that's great. I, I don't want to discount some big things that were there. And so, if we were to, what we didn't hit in the two thousand and twelve plan was a new pool facility. That was called, if you read the two thousand and twelve plan, you know, we needed a bigger pool facility. This town and this council has asked for larger sports facilities as well. The land that is available to us is shrinking pretty quickly, but there's also opportunities just north of here that may be possible. One thing I don't want to do is dismiss it in any way, shape, or form, even if it's an aspirational goal. We do need a civic facility. If you're going to ask me to give direction to staff to say, no, we're not going to focus on a civic facility when we just lost our gym to the middle school and N D U S D, I'm going to say, I'm not sure that's a wise decision to make. We actually need to think about, as this city grows, as the needs change, we actually really need to think about how to fund those things and how to keep them on the record. So no, I'm not going to agree with you that we shouldn't think about a bigger pool, that we shouldn't think about some sort of city facility that includes a gym and, how many people did you say in that gym, eleven hundred?
A thousand.
Thousand, yeah. Like, I would love to have that. And, you know, I ain't got the money now, but we'll, we'll figure it out. There could be some funding, there could be a grant, there could be a new tax base that's moving in here that's happening. And to suggest that I'm going to approve a hundred-and-eighty-thousand-dollar contract to a consulting firm without even thinking about that, or considering it, or having them study it and plan it, no, I'm not going to let you get away with that. So I think we should be thinking about some of those bigger things. And then obviously, all the other things that involve to improve the parks, recreation, programming, accessibility, sure, those are table stakes, let's put those in there. But to me, this is an important document, and I would ask this council to say too, that, you know, you ought to weigh in here, that we did this twelve years ago. There was a couple of things in there that we, that were called out for, that we did that didn't work out. You know, Clark Ranch, we did a big study on that, and that's kind of there, and, you know, that's been collecting dust for a while. Of course, we don't have that, but, you know, to say that we can't have something more that we actually really need, like, one could argue that Clark Ranch is kind of like a nice cherry on top if we were able to pull it off, but a pool and, and a, a community facility for sports and recreation and, you know, events, we need. Thank you.
Very good. I would agree with you on that. It's just a question of how we figure out the funding on it. And that's always been the way, stood in the way of being able to achieve those larger projects. But yeah, we need to plan ahead. This, currently, we're looking at updating a plan that was put together in two thousand and twelve. So twelve years down the road, it's two thousand and thirty-six, and how big is this city going to be, and what amenities do we need? So, yeah, I think we need to put that on the plan, knowing that we ought to be pursuing a funding base at the same time. Over time, we maybe can accumulate enough to get it started. With that, Councilmember Joseph.
Yes, I would agree with Vice Mayor Oro and the mayor. Recognizing that because we don't have the funding doesn't mean we shouldn't at least put it on the list. And asterisk with, this is a great idea, but we don't have ten million dollars, or something like that. And mainly because we want to do two things. We want to make sure that it exists as an official project if a grant showed up, for example, or a big project started generating big revenues. And then secondly, to make sure we identify the physical location so that we can make sure we leave it there for a civic center versus using it for some other use. So I would agree that we ought to throw in some of those big projects, even if we don't have the funding, just so that we make sure they're not forgotten, frankly, and that if the opportunity comes up, we don't have to sit down and say, well, it's not in our plan, so we can't pursue it. So I would agree, I, I think that ought to be included.
Go ahead, please. Vice Mayor Oro.
So it's the master plan. It's the master plan. But what is it really? I, I almost feel like it's almost a little bit of a vision document of assessment of what we need. You know, obviously, if it was a master plan that we didn't, you know, that we can't execute on, we executed on a lot in two thousand and twelve, but we didn't do it all. It's, it's not like there's a punishment for not doing it, other than people getting mad at you for not having a bigger pool. But I think, you know, there's no reason to exclude it. And I, I just want to take staff's take on, like, what do you think this document is?
Philosophically, I'm viewing it more as a to-do list rather than an aspirational list. But, you know, that's, that's the approach that the manager wants to take to that, whereas you all might be more on the aspirational end of the spectrum, and that's why we're having the dialogue.
Then let me ask you this, what is a general plan?
The general plan, to use those words, as far as our, our Bible for new development, the general plan describes what, sorry, Constitution, not Bible, that was a bad reference, the Constitution for new development. I didn't mean to misquote you, Bill. The Constitution for new development, and, you know, it's a legal document that, that describes the land uses, right? And that entirely depends on, almost entirely depends on private developers, right? So it has a different vein because it may be more aspirational, but is always going to be dependent on a third party to take private capital and go implement, hopefully a good idea. It isn't a to-do list for us, other than to provide the table, you know, metaphorically, for them to come and implement whatever the private capital wants to fund, you know, in our city. This document, I'm viewing a little bit differently as, I'm viewing it more as, as a to-do list. But if we want it to be more aspirational, we can, we can have that flavor to it. I'm always leery of creating false expectations, and so that's my point to it. But if, if the right caveats and the right asterisks can be around, you know, the notion of aspiration, to say, you know, that it is in here, asterix, we're going to have to figure out how we're going to fund it, and I think.
Yeah, and so, and so, yeah, I'm glad we're having this philosophical discussion, because to me, I view it completely differently. And like, I, I could take everything you said about the general plan, about aspiration and private development and land use, and say, yeah, I've got those same aspirations for a park and facilities master plan that needs to have an aspirational goal while we're also using city funds, public funds, grants, or whatever it is, to build facilities and implement programming that we need. It's a guiding principle. And so, without that guiding principle, we're, we're, we're not getting to a point to where we're creating world-class parks, world-class facilities. And like, unless we have that memorialized someplace, it's going to be very, really hard to deliver. A task list is great, I'll still hold you to task for it, but, you know, you know, it's up to you as a professional and for the staff here to say, you know what, the reality is, I don't have twenty-three million dollars for a gym, I just don't. But here's a way that we can do it, okay, then let's, and whoever sits behind this dice then has to make those hard decisions of, you know what, we're going to get a basketball court repaved instead of a gym, right? And that's just the reality you have to deal with, but, you know, it, it, you know, it's, it's something that you have to aspire to and be a guiding light. And that's why, on Sunday night, when I was, I was ready to fall asleep, I said, I felt like, whoa, this is way more important than I think it is. Because it's easy to approve a, an eighteen-month project budget for a consulting firm, but this really is the genesis of eighteen months from now, when this is done, it's going to be guiding us for another generation, actually.
Yeah, absolutely. And the, the consultant's scope of work is, you know, agnostic really on where we want to land in that spectrum. So we wouldn't need to go back and change the consultant's scope of work. They're going to be taking as a baseline the two thousand and twelve work. And so, it's, we start there, we start with the, the more recent needs assessments, and we, we add that information. They're going to work with us and do whatever kind of flavor we want. For them, it's really the same kind of work, but we want to make sure we've created the right.
Right, and that, and that was my fear as I was reading it on Sunday night, that the consultant has their list of things to do, and they don't really care. They're going to interview, they're going to put together things, they're going to think about, you know, processes and make recommendations, and some of, you know, probably eighty, okay, sixty percent of that we know off the top of the bat, they're just writing it out for us. Really, there's a twenty percent that we need to provide input here as a council and as a staff to guide the rest of the population to something that I think we all need and deserve. So again, going back to this whole philosophical thing rather than a checklist thing.
Councilmember Joseph?
And to follow up on that, you know, having been on both sides of the spectrum, I'm certainly sympathetic to saying, hey, don't ask me to do the impossible. So I do think it's important we identify them, that we have the sufficient asterix that say, look, we don't envision having twenty-three million bucks, but here's what it might take to do that. On the other hand, I've been here long enough that I remember back in the day when we were a brand-new city, and we were going to build our middle school, and it was going to have a pool and all these things, and there was concerns about, you know, can we afford it? Probably came from me. And I remember former council members coming up saying, look, I, I believe in American Canyon, and I think we can afford this debt service because that's how we were going to build it all. And sure enough, it worked out. So even though I understand that there's a concern about, don't, don't bite off more than you can chew, on the other hand, it's amazing how much you can chew if you, if you commit to biting off a lot. And I'm sure I've destroyed that analogy in some fashion, but I guess the main thing is, we've got to be aspirational, we've got to include the big things that we really want, we need to make sure that they're feasible, and then at some point, we may want to jump and say, yeah, let's borrow the big bucks, or let's do whatever and make it happen.
Yeah, and I would say, you know, add any disclaimer language you want, you know? And, and, you know, Councilmember Joseph, you know, you said, you know, we probably should have borrowed all our money in two thousand and twenty and built that facility, right? You know, when, when rates were like zero. And, you know, we could have sat on that, but that, you know, who knows what the future may, may hold, and we may, this, this body or a future body may decide to take out a big loan and amortize over forty years, and we pay that back.
Okay.
Yeah, I think really what you're seeing is kind of the, the playing out of the dynamic about how to set a vision, right, and how to implement, right? So that's the feedback that we need, you know, from council, so.
I think a document like needs both of those in it. You know, there's that part where saying, hey, you know, this is, this is a wishlist on the other end. These are more than more pragmatic things that we can get accomplished, but if we don't have a dream that we want to accomplish, we'll never get there. So, yeah, I think the aspirational part is important. Okay. Council, ready for a public comment?
Yes, sir.
Public comment on this matter is open.
Mayor Garcia, I have no written comments received and no speaker cards. I do have Justin, who wants to make a comment online. Go ahead, Justin.
I have a quick question. I think Ally's doing a great job. I think the noses, there are two things. Over by behind a Dawson Way, there's a park, it has an old restroom. They've been there for ages, and it's been here my life. There are ways we can need to see if we can upgrade a, redo the restroom. That's been there a long time, it was locked down, so people can't do it. And the other thing is, inside where they did a baseball game, press it, next door to Dawson Way, you, you can walk, old small track, you'll see rocks, and I'm thinking there are ways we can upgrade that too, or maybe new fence. So I want to see that happening hopefully soon. That might turn about restroom is old Russian, be part of baseball, it's small playground right there. I might see if we can upgrade new playground and restroom. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Justin.
Mr. Mayor, I'm, I'm assuming that was Community Park One?
That's what I wrote in my notes.
Yeah, and we do have some improvement plans envisioned. I don't know if we want to discuss those in any detail tonight or, or not, but suffice it to say that there is some, some resources being looked at at Community Park One.
Correct.
Very good. Yes, next, uh, next speaker, please, Mr. Leary.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, Kenneth Leary, resident, American Canyon. I just want to emphasize the importance of planning and dreaming. They're not exclusively separate, it's something that I think we can do together. Funding is difficult, but I would wonder if American Canyons would support a bond to build these things, you know? I, I would think American Canyon residents would, that they would build, would support a bond to build a recreation facility or two in this community. So I think they should go ahead with it, with the dreaming and the planning, because can't get that dream without the plan. So I would hope that we could look into that idea of a bond so we can get this going. And thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Anyone else online?
I have no hands raised.
Very good, thank you. Okay, I will close public comment this time, return to council for, for the discussion. Is our action, there's a resolution?
If staff is willing to take the direction of the council, I'll make a motion.
Pretty loaded question, I think we understand. I think we understand that.
With staff's, with council's direction, I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution Number Twenty-Twenty-Four, next in order, a resolution of the City of American Canyon amending the fiscal year twenty-four twenty-five budget and approving an agreement with RRM Design Group in the amount not to exceed two-hundred-and-seven-thousand dollars to update the Parks and Community Services Master Plan.
I'll second. But again, I'll second it, though. Motion second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Joseph?
Yes.
Councilmember Washington?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Oro?
Yes.
Mayor Garcia?
Yes, thank you, council.
Thank you.
We look forward to achieving many of those things. Okay, we move now to management staff oral reports.
Director Akita has updates, and I think Kate's the only one.
I'm here to tell you all the wonderful things that are happening in American Canyon over the next couple of weeks. So on July nineteenth, there will be a free adoption through the twenty-first at the Napa County Animal Shelter. The hours will be from ten AM to four forty-five, they are closed for lunch from twelve to one. On July twentieth is a cycle for shakes, this is in partnership with the Napa County Bicycle Coalition and American Canyon Bike Shop, held at Community Park One from ten AM to twelve PM. On July twenty-fourth is the Regional Climate Action and Abbotation Public Meeting at six PM in, at the Yountville Community Center. In addition, they are asking for community feedback on a survey, you can find that survey on the community calendar under. In addition, they are asking for community feedback on a survey. You can find that survey on the community calendar under the event date. On July twenty-sixth, there will be a senior picnic in the park at Shenandoah Park from eleven AM to one PM. This is in partnership with Seroptimus. On. July twenty-seventh, I totally wrote that date wrong, is a sunset ride, a bike ride at Wetlands Edge Park with the American Canyon Community Parks Foundation at seven fifteen PM. On August third is our annual Water Carnival at the Philip West Aquatic Center from one-thirty to five. And then lastly, don't forget that um August sixth is National Night Out with our very own American Canyon Police Department. If you are interested and would like to participate, please register your block party on our website. Thank you.
Thank you for the update. All the activities out there. Anything further, Mr. Halli?
No, mayor. Thank you.
Okay. Move on then to uh mayor council comments, uh committee reports. See, uh Vice Mayor Oro, we got your uh report, written report. Anything more to add to that?
Yeah, sure. Uh I will, I attended, I'm not gonna go over my report, but I did attend the Association of Bay Area Government Meeting. If y'all wanna look at their budget, I'm gonna leave it over there. It's right. Well, and I know you wanna look. Um they are raising fees on us, by the way, so for for membership fees. The other thing I wanted to point out, and I'm pretty proud of it, I have um. Submitted a proposal to the League of California Cities Annual Conference. Uh on AI and misinformation, and I'm proud to say that my proposal got accepted, and I will be speaking at that conference. Uh on and I put together a panel to talk about AI misinformation. And I'll have to give a shout out to Jen Kastenback, because the way that they pick um uh panels is they wanna mix it northern and southern California. Um and I had three guys here from northern California on my panel. Jen found me uh somebody in LA, in the LA area, and through our relationship with Trump, V P Smith, I think that pushed them over, so thank you very much.
Congratulations. I'll cover to that.
And then um finally, uh doing this for a friend. My friend Deborah O. Smith, who heads up, she's executive director at Molly's Angels. Everybody, if you're not familiar with Molly's Angels, they do great work for seniors, delivering food, driving them around, uh being a resources for them. They're having a golf tournament on September twenty-third. Information here. Um if you can't golf, you can join them for lunch for thirty bucks. It's a annual fundraiser, and I'll leave these here for the city staff as well. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Councilmember Joseph, anything to?
Yes, I didn't submit a report, but I thought I would give you a heads up on a couple of big projects. The Napa Valley Transportation Authority, we're meeting tomorrow. We're going to get a presentation on transit-oriented development. Which could be an exciting opportunity to combine housing and transportation. We'll get a capital projects update, and then we're going to approve funding for uh an active transportation plan, a county-wide active transportation plan. Which is basically the combination of a pedestrian and a bicycle plan blended into one, which makes sense. So, that will be happening similar to the bike and pedestrian plans in the past. There will be a chapter on American Canyon, uh along with all the other jurisdictions. And it will hopefully give us a an aspirational plan uh of how we're gonna get around. So, that's happening, and then on the Climate Action Committee, uh we met in June and talked about the regional. Climate Action and Adaptation Plan. Got into some good discussion there. We're going to continue that in July. Hopefully, that project could be done by the end of the year. Um so that's exciting, just to think that we could get a plan done and within the timeframe was was exciting to me, because. But then again, I've been in government for a while, so I'm I'm excited at projects that come together when they say they will. So, that's what's happening on those two events, and uh that's that.
Councilmember Joseph, uh any word on Sausal Junction and SR twenty-nine?
Uh actually, I did read a a little blurb that I think it's starting July twenty-seventh until August ninth. Um they're gonna have one of the two southbound lanes will be closed, which will make traffic just a a horrible event. But the good news is that is to finish up the Sausal Junction, so that maybe by September, October. Or or probably September, we'll be driving along. Wonderful, worrying, or or that intersection will be a breeze, and then we'll start complaining about how.
We got the uh those from Caltrans through M D T A, I gave it to our communication manager, posted on our city webpage, so people more aware of it.
For those, for that week or two, it it will be bad, and you'll have one lane instead of two.
Well, there's an alternate route.
There are alternates, but it it'll be bad, so.
Yes, you're right.
Try to do everything on this side of Sausal Junction for the next two weeks.
Very good. Uh Councilmember Washington.
Uh thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanna say that we had a great uh Fourth of July celebration. I I wanna just thank the staff. I mean, I've seen all you guys out there, especially Jason. He was he was everywhere out there. Uh Vice Mayor Oro was keeping everybody cool with the water gun. So, I kind of appreciated being behind him this last time, so that was enjoyable. Uh but I just wanna um bring back, you know, last week was a pretty tough week for me. Uh I got a lot of cons- uh dolences for my family pet that I passed. That passed away, eighteen-year-old pup that uh has been with me for a lot of years. I just wanna reach out to the folks of American Canyon for thanking thanking you all for the prayers that you're giving me. But also the prayers that were were provided for the officer for Vacaville that uh was tragically uh hit and and uh passed. Due to his injuries, as well as the firefighter technician that lost his life that same evening. Not trying to be the bearer of bad news, but last week was pretty tough for me. Um and uh including, you know, uh the shooting of of Mr. Trump. You know, I just think that we need to keep our country in prayer. Uh and just to to add, you know, we just need to be acting accordingly. So, I just reach out to everyone to say, keep our country in prayer. But thank you for, you know, just giving me those, that feedback uh for my pup. That really meant a lot for me. Like I said, it was a tough week for me, and I'm glad we're moving forward. Thank you.
Well, we appreciate the thought. The council member Washington, thank you. Well, Fourth of July was a great event. I think I hear a lot of compliments about it. Uh so there's uh um, well, the activity is uh think gaining a lot of traction. See, here's what impressed me. It's uh. Uh I grew up in the desert where it's a hundred and twenty-one, you know, a hundred and twenty. This last year's been horrible. This is like, in one week, it's about three days or a hundred and twenty. Uh it was a hot day here. I've been long, many years away from that environment, and it was uh it was a suffering day for the heat. Uh but we managed to get through it. I think part of it for me was uh, you know, what precautions do we encourage people with, with the cooling and the. Uh hydration, et cetera, is a big emphasis uh out there. But by evening, with a little breeze coming in, Community Park Two was packed. It was packed with people. And it wasn't all just American Canyon either. In Napa County, we're the only ones that had a pyrotechnic show, and uh a lot of folks, I think, uh took note of what was happening in Napa with the drones. Okay. Uh I think for me, uh having seen one, it's just like, I'm missing the big bang sound out there, you know, I. But, you know, uh I understand why they have done it. I appreciate how how we put it together here and the precautions we take with it. And uh from a public safety part, I think Chief Greenberg would weigh in on, you know, we did we have any big issues? It just seems to be ve- very orderly, yes. Thank you. I appreciate people respecting that and having a good time. Uh I joined the parade. My position, though, was in front of your parade with the big water gun, so. I was uh trying to avoid uh getting caught in the crossfire. But, you know, uh on a hot day, nothing feels better than a splash of cold water. Meet me in the street, another huge success. Wow. Uh we have gotten really uh in another very hot day. But, you know, uh it uh it did fill up. And uh I don't know if there's been any real management issues with it. I noticed that uh the cleanup was all done by finish of the day, you know? Uh so it's working very well. Uh and congratulations to that. I think there's another way of being able to communicate uh what we have to offer here, not only in uh local merchants. Uh who have spot. The uh kid commerce piece is a huge success. Uh many of them are there for the first time. We have a new flavored dog biscuit. It's uh, it's got apricot in it, and it's uh, it's uh, it has a texture to it, yes. A bag also did uh attend the Ebag General Assembly, uh state proportion on housing and how uh. Different jurisdictions are dealing with the same challenges. We all have that issue. And how to build more housing and approaches it, but I think uh if I'm putting American Canyon in that mix, we're doing well. So, I think we're meeting our goals there. You know, there's one thing uh that I do take uh very on a very personal way. It's uh goat heads, stickers, okay? Uh if you don't know, they they got these two little spikes on top. They're uh, they flatten bicycle tires, and they're torture on dogs' feet. Uh so I taking my walks, I do by uh Yellit Street Park, and I see one starting to creep out on the sidewalk. So, I went back with a my plastic bag, and I didn't find just one plant. I got that bag about a third full of all these sticker plants. Uh anybody who uh would take the time to pull those up is doing everybody a big favor, because it just really helps uh. Our access to those areas and not having to uh face some sort of injury. And that would conclude my report. Anything for future agenda items, council?
Mayor, just real quickly, I forgot to mention something. I apologize. The council uh will meet again on August sixth. Uh we're gonna have a short meeting at four-thirty in the afternoon, because it's National Night Out.
Yes.
And so, uh as we're talking about different events and things, I wanted to make sure everyone knew Tuesday, August sixth, uh is our National Night Out.
I got my shirt in the closet. I think it's probably from uh the first time we did it. Yeah, proves I've been around a long time. Okay, well, thank you for that, Mr. Halli. Anything about, again, future agenda items, council?
No, sir.
All right, then we have concluded our business for the evening. Thank you all. We are adjourned. Good night, American Canyon.